...meeting with the invocation by Counselor Adams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of government business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your wisdom upon us as our activity so that we can handle the affairs that may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. I will make a motion to appoint the Law Director as the reader for the clerk.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Law Director, would you read it?
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
Counselor Nixon.
Here.
Counselor Gordon.
Here.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lowe.
Here.
And Counselor Crayer.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to add Communication Number Nine and Number Ten to our agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second is to amend, excuse me, to amend tonight's agenda by adding Communications Number Nine and Ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Item A be received, filed and approved, and Item B, C and D be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive, file and approve Item A, and to receive and file Items B, C and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2017 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Auditor regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From Major Baker regarding liquor permits.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed, and I believe be filed with no objection to the Department of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, excuse me, the motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three, and to notify the Board, the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that there are no objections to any of the license and permit holder renewals. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to retire K-9 Bailey.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Five receive and file. Legislation on my agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into contract with AFSMI.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Six receive and file. Legislation on my agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Deputy Director of Parks regarding legislation to enter into an MOU with Lima Area Freedom School.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Counselor Lowe.
Is there anyone, Mr. Staley, I guess, that could speak on what the role in this partnership is going to be?
We are excited about this opportunity, get involved with Freedom Schools through the Children's Defense Fund. Our partnership is going to enable the Freedom School to look at the next age levels. You know, our playground program goes from ages six to 12. We're looking at the possibility, or we're looking at the opportunity to move that next tier into 13, 14 and 15-year-old kids, which we don't service at this point. For those who've been a part of the Freedom School, we got involved with them a little bit last year, and started conversations back in October, and have been meeting throughout, and we look forward to that opportunity. So, we look to not only to be a part of our program, but be an extension of our playground program in the future.
So, with Trinity United Methodist Church, they'll have the older kids and the other kids will remain at South?
They're going to be at South and at Bradfield. Those are the two sites.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of various items.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Lima Allen County Chamber of Commerce, the Allen Economic Development Group and downtown Lima, requesting Lima City Council's support for the formation of an energy district and a property assessed clean energy financing program.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed, and referred to council as a whole.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Nine, and to refer it to councils committee of the whole. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Finance Director regarding cancellation of the agreement between the Central Collection Agency of the City of Cleveland, Ohio, and the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed, and any necessary legislation be prepared by the Law Department.
Second.
The motion, the second is to receive and file Communication Number Ten, and to authorize the Law Department to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Patrolman Joshua Snyder regarding the social media update.
Thank you. I am Officer Joshua Snyder with the Lima Police Department Social Media Team. I am standing in place for Lieutenant Andy Green. He has compiled a report that I'm going to go over. Basis of the report is more of a statistical analysis of the engagement that we're having with the community, and any followers of our social media platforms. So, bear with me as I go through a lot of different numbers, but just keep in mind that these numbers show how well this unit is doing. It is the newest unit within the police department. With the several members, I will end with the number of members that we have within the media team. At this point, we have several different Facebook pages. We have the main police department page. We also have COP office pages, COP Precinct One, Two and Three. We have the K-9 team, the LPD dive team. As of May Team, the LPD Facebook page has over 33,000 followers. Okay, those are members of the community and outside the community. Within the last 30 days, we have averaged around 15 new likes per day, and the most amount of likes in one day was around 69. That was April 27th. Above and beyond the followers, we also have people that reach out to us or engage with us through private messaging. In the last 30 days, our page has reached over 168,000 separate individuals. Those persons don't have to hit the like button on our page, they can still follow us. That is, again, over 168,000 separate individuals. Of that number of individuals, we have had over 228,000 engagements with the page. We receive a large number of private messages through Facebook. They can range anything from tips to crimes, locations of subjects, and just general conversation about law enforcement, the city, anything like that. Another platform we have is Twitter. As of May 18th, the LPD Twitter has over 8,000 followers. Of those followers, we have engaged with over 413,000 times in the past 30 days. Instagram is a newer one. We are starting to use that a little more as it gets more popular. As of May 18th, the LPD Instagram has 1,345 followers. Nextdoor, Nextdoor is an excellent program that we have started collaborating with. It is not ran by our department, it is ran by the residents. As of May 18th, the City of Lima has 771 residents who have signed up and joined Nextdoor Neighborhood. Just to go in a little bit about how Nextdoor works, it is actually comprised by residents themselves. Again, it's not ran by the police department. We can engage with the residents, however, it is ran by them unlike us, as in Facebook, Instagram and other platforms. There are 17 active neighborhoods in the area on Nextdoor. The neighborhoods are, and boundaries are defined by the residents as well. It is not anything that the city or the police department has set up as we have the COP offices and their areas. Snapchat is, I would say, the newest platform that we are starting to use. We have not officially started using that as the other platforms. It's something we're in experimental phase right now, as it becomes more popular across the technological world. We have several special events that we are doing on our social media platforms. Just list a couple of them. We have Committee Roll Call. It's something that we started a few months ago that is broadcasting a monthly video, prepared by a supervisor on any sort of topics that they may specialize in. We are seeking input on any specific topic that any citizen, anybody else would want us to go in depth with. We have the supervisors that specialize in certain aspects speak about those roles. We participate in Warrant Wednesday through Facebook and Twitter, in which we post photos and information of suspects with active warrants in hopes of eliciting tips. They generally are chosen random through a list of warrants that we have. Once in a great while, we'll have a detective, a high-profile case that we may list somebody. Or if we have a patrol officer that's investigating a misdemeanor case, he may approach a social media member and say, "This is something I really would like you to post for us," and we will do that. Not long ago, we created an event called FYI Friday. FYI Friday is a Twitter event to where, for, we try to do 24 hours, that we have somebody monitoring all of the Twitter questions, feedbacks, messages, that we can engage with the community. We've had all sorts of different questions, and it's very great. We have a very good following on that, great feedback. Lieutenant Green started this after he noticed a couple other agencies across the country that are doing it. And that is, we have had great feedback with that. Anything, again, from law enforcement, Lima, the police department, and any sort of city questioning, anything that the public would like to ask us, then we respond to them as quickly as we can. In ending, I will list the social media team members. The Commander is Lieutenant Andy Green, the Public Information Officer, Lieutenant John Bishop, Sergeant Andy, or Aaron Rhodey, Sergeant Jason Garlock, myself, Patrolman Katie Wademan, Patrolman Nate Freed, Patrolman Corey Knoffs, Patrolman Eric Miracle, Patrolman Justin Wireman, Patrolman Scotty Ludicki, and Communications Operator Jessica Voorhees. And again, I will add is, this is a great unit. The unit has come a long way since we have started several years ago, and just the number of followers, the feedback, and just the tips and law enforcement that are received has been very beneficial.
Thank you, Officer Snyder. Mr. President. Mr. Lowe.
I have a question for you, Officer. Many of us in this room are part of those social networks, and you've said how great it has been. Do you have any numbers of individuals that you've been able to actually apprehend?
I do not have that. No, I do not have that with me.
That would be very, because a lot of people sometimes, in my line of work when I'm talking, they would love to see that, yes, you know what, my input helped get this individual off the street, or find this dope dealer, or this is the house where my cousin went that OD'd, you know what I'm saying? Like, those tips, it'd be nice to know the numbers next time you present.
Okay. We generally do engage with the persons that provide the tips afterwards. I can't say we follow up with every single one. We do try to, try to do that through Crime Stoppers. We forward that to them as well, and they have procured monetary rewards for persons. That is something that we will have on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is Mike Shane Hoffer regarding the Opioid Action Commission and their prevention strategies.
Thanks, Mr. President. I may need a little bit of, we need some assistance here. The whole thing, let's end it. Law Director, plant puppets.
It went to sleep on you, didn't it?
It went to sleep.
McLean does that on me, too. It's just...
All right, I should be good. Let's hope that's good.
Well, thanks very much, and thank you, council members, for having me here. Back in December, we formed the Opioid Action Commission with the goal of pulling together a wide-ranging number of community members to address the issue of the opioid epidemic. And Mr. Lowe is, I know, has been very, was actively involved in that, you know, a few years ago, when we started organizing this. And our goal was to do a couple of things. One was to update people on the treatment work that we're doing. As of July, it's my hope that we'll have two detox facilities up and running, as well as expanded doctors to do the treatment part. But today, I don't want to talk about treatment, I want to talk about prevention. And I prepared a video here to, to show, and my goal is that within 10 minutes of any parent seeing this video, they'll be convinced to change their minds and to do something differently. So, I'm going to let the video speak for itself, see if it goes here. Too many of our young people are dying by suicide and drug overdoses. They say that they feel alone and hopeless. Why? It's because they're missing the face-to-face, real connection that results from talking to someone who loves them and cares about them. And the most significant connection young people have is a parent. Let's start talking to our young people about their strengths and assets, about the harmful effects of drugs, and about suicide.
Did you know that kids gain more when they build on their strengths and talents than when they try to improve areas of weakness? Focusing on their strengths give them the resilience they need to succeed at school, resist using drugs, and stay emotionally healthy. We spend so much time correcting, directing and instructing that we forget how important it is to take the time to notice the good things our children are doing, the effort they are putting in, and the small successes that lead to big achievements. Just taking a moment in the car, or even on a walk, just to say, "Hey, I noticed you put your books away," or "I liked your outfit today," it can give a young person a new sense of worth and motivate them to achieve more.
Hey Noah, I just wanted to thank you for helping your brother with his math homework last night. It was a huge help. Hope you have a great day today.
Hey Noah, what's up, buddy? Hey, I just wanted to tell you that I am so impressed with how hard you've been working. Like, your grades are coming up, and just been working so hard in class, and I'm really proud of you.
Great job at practice the other day.
Thanks.
Hey Noah, what's up? Thanks for helping me move the desk yesterday. Appreciate it.
Hi Noah, hey, cool up? How was school?
It was great. It was really great.
Did you know that children whose parents talk to them about drugs are 50% less likely to use? My wife and I were driving through town when our children were preschoolers. My two girls noticed a Virginia Sims billboard and were commenting about how beautiful the girl on the billboard was, the girl holding a lit cigarette. In a moment of dumb luck, I told the girls how sad I felt, and they asked me why. I told them about cancer, how this beautiful girl would soon be wasted away. As far as I know, neither of the girls ever smoked. They knew I disapproved of smoking at a crucial moment in their lives. Look for moments to let your young people know how harmful drugs are. It's not hard, it's as simple as saying, "Hey, I heard in the news about another person dying from addiction. What are you hearing?" Or, "People are saying there are a lot of drugs in schools. What are your friends saying?"
Are you excited about high school?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about high school. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Yeah, you know, and along with that fun comes some tough decisions, buddy. There's going to be some pressure to start drinking or do other drugs, and those things will take away from the fun you're looking forward to. And buddy, you know your mom and I don't have privilege to drink.
Young people who feel hopeless, who isolate themselves, who start saying things like, "Life is not worth living anymore," are more than likely having developed a suicide. This is the time to reach out to your young person with something simple like, "I noticed you don't seem like yourself lately, and you seem very isolated and withdrawn. You're not hanging out with your friends anymore. Are you thinking about suicide?"
Young people who try or complete suicide don't feel they have the strength or the support from others to go on living. They want others to be aware of their pain and to stop them from dying. These groups are at high risk for suicide, be it gay or lesbian, using alcohol or other substances, being a victim, a perpetrator, or a witness to bullying, or having depression. What can you do? Show the person you care, listen without judgment, and ask them directly, "Are you thinking about suicide?" Then escort them to help.
This hurts so much. Life sucks. I don't really know how it can go on.
I don't know what's going on with her. She just doesn't seem like herself.
She's acting different. She's not hanging out with her friends.
No one knows how this feels. It's just not worth it anymore.
I shouldn't wait any longer. I need to say something.
Honey, you don't seem like yourself. Is everything okay?
I'm fine.
I'm just really concerned. You just seem like you're not with it anymore.
It's nothing. Everything just seems so pointless.
I just want you to know that you can talk to me about anything. Have you been thinking about suicide?
Yeah, a little.
Okay, here's the last question. Did you know that the last part of your body to develop is your brain? The brain doesn't completely finish developing until well into our twenties, and for men, it takes a little longer. Here's what that means. Our children do not have the brain function to figure out on their own, and the action they're doing right now will affect them on the future.
So, you can see how much they need us to tell them about their strengths and assets, talk to them about the dangers of drugs, and reach out to them when they feel hopeless and isolated.
That's why our children need us to connect the dots for them until that part of their brain, which will do it for them in the future, is finished developing. They're flying blind, and they need us to set the course. It is critical that we talk to our children early and talk to them often about these three topics. In a simple way, we can make such a difference in their lives. But you must be ready, because you never know just when the right opportunity will arise. That's it. You don't have to make it a lecture, just let them know you love them.
I think many of us worry that if we start talking about drugs or suicide to our children, that it will give them an idea. Some parents think that if I tell them about their strengths, I'll make them soft. We are telling you now, change your mind. Our children are with us for such a short time.
Don't assume that your kids know what you think about them and how you feel about them. They need to hear you say the words, "I love you." They need to hear you tell them about their strengths, their talents, and that you believe in their dreams. They need your acceptance and affirmation more than anything. Don't miss the opportunities you have right now.
Young people love it when their parents talk to them. Even though they look like they're not listening, or might even look annoyed with you, their heart is listening, because all of this is frightening. They need to hear that you care. Please take the time to talk to your children about these three topics. They are counting on you.
Go to WeCarePeople.org and click on "Let's Talk" to get more ideas about how to talk to your children about their strengths, about drugs, and about suicide. You know, in the last three months, there were 122 overdoses at St. Rita's. I'm trying to create a level of urgency in our community that says, "We, unless we change the trajectory of this epidemic, we're going to be overwhelmed, and we'll continue to be overwhelmed." And so, that's why we started a whole program called "Let's Talk," Listen Like a Friend, and Respond Like a Parent. And our goal is, right now, most of the schools have already adopted it. They're ready to show it to all the parents of athletes. Anytime there's a parent-teacher conference, we have to change people's minds about how important it is that we talk to our kids, or our grandkids. I saw you with your grandkids at the Lima Stadium yesterday. And somebody, somebody who loves them and cares about them, that can talk to them, and we can change the trajectory of this, but we have to change what we're doing already. So, this is the, I gave you the parent handout, and it has on it how to start the conversation with your kids, your grandkids, about their strengths, to know the signs of suicide, and also how to start that conversation about drugs. And I tell every parent I meet, if there's a place you're going to start, if there's one thing that you can do that will have the biggest impact on your kids' lives, it's talk to them about their strengths. Build them up so that when the moment comes when they will be offered a drug, they'll be strong. And it's only us that can make that happen. So, we're doing everything we can on the treatment side, but we're trying to get the whole community together to make a difference with our kids, so, thanks very much for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Now, I better turn this off so that the Law Director...
Yeah, he has to read.
I know, I know. I don't know how to operate the system here, so...
Mr. President, I have a question for Mike.
Yes.
Hey, Mike, why don't we go out and do some outreach out there, and get out in the community and talk about this? Because you're not going to reach everybody. You're going to be able to reach some of the kids at school, you might get some of the kids at the chamber. Let's get out there in the neck of the woods and get the folks and let them know, just go out there, walk and then talk, and how important it is to get off this, and how dangerous it is, you know? Harry Kraken, City of Lima, that we need to do this. We've got to get out there and do it.
And we've got, right now, that most of the schools are on board with this. I've talked to all the chambers of commerce. We'll be getting businesses to do employee conferences. This would be a great thing for the City of, City of Lima, to, you know, to just do an employee, it takes 10 minutes.
Right.
I've already spoken to churches, they're ready to start doing this, so, you know, we're not going to get everybody.
No, you're not.
But if we all say, "Look, there's, this is something simple that anybody could do. Anybody could show this video, and you can download the whole package on WeCarePeople.org, the video, the parent guide, and even a little primer that tells you how to start the conversation." Now, normally, at the end of one of these, I look around at everybody and say, "Now, how many of you are willing to do this with a group that you, you interact with?" how many of you are willing to do this with a group that you interact with?" You know, it could be, uh, you know, the ladies', you know, book club, or the...
Slumber parties.
Slumber party, Bible study, you know? It's focused on adults, and anybody can do this, because it's so simple. So, anyway, thanks for, I don't wanna take up, I could talk all evening, but you know, I'm gonna recuse myself from that.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, next on the agenda is committee reports. We have a council of the whole committee report. We met on May 15th at 6:30 PM to discuss electric aggregation for the city of Lima. All of the members of council were there, and we met with Bill Bradish and Kirk Mizurek of Palmer Energy, and Gary Hunter from the Ohio Municipal League, who is their legal counsel. We got an update on the subject of electric aggregation for the city of Lima. There was some good discussion and information provided. At the end of the meeting, a motion was made to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation to place the electric aggregation process on the November 2017 ballot. The motion was approved unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at 7:40 PM. I move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
Motion, the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is ordinance 10417.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance code charges.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that ordinance 10417 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 10417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? All those, I'll have the clerk reader call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
And Counselor Crayer.
Ordinance 10417 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10517.
Amending the 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 105-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 10517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
And Counselor Crayer is absent.
Ordinance 10517 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10617.
Enter into contract with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 106-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Uh, the motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 10617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
And Counselor Crayer.
Ordinance 10617 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10717.
Designating the Hall of Justice as the Chief William K. Davenport Hall of Justice Building and authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts to reflect the name change.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance 107-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 10717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
And Counselor Crayer is absent.
Ordinance 10717 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10817.
Authorizing the mayor to de-asset and transfer Police Canine Bailey to Sergeant Nick Hart.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance 108-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 10817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer is absent.
I'm sorry. Uh, ordinance 10817 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10917.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the demolition of 1101 East Kibbe Street.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communicate, or excuse me, ordinance 109-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 10917 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Ordinance 10917 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11017.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for purchase of a Ford F-550 with an aerial package for the Streets Division of the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 11017 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Motion, and the second, is to pass ordinance 11017 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer is absent.
Ordinance 11017 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11117.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Lima Area Freedom School.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 11117 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Ordinance 11117, the motion is to pass ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take notes in salience here, okay? The motion is to pass ordinance 11117 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer is absent.
Ordinance 11117 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11217.
Authorizing the mayor to dispose of miscellaneous public works vehicles and equipment.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 11217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer is absent.
Ordinance 11217 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11317.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1002.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that 11317 be passed on its first reading. Second.
Okay, the motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 11317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Ordinance 11317 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Next is miscellaneous business, and we start with Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend, be safe. There'll be a lot of activity. Be careful driving. Also, I would like to bring up an issue and make a motion. The HR committee received an email from the Secretary and Acting President of Lima Civil Service Board, and President Nixon was also included. This email notified us of a relocating of the files that were in the former office of the late Andy King, and that they were to be moved last Wednesday to the HR department here in the city building. I have spoken to Deborah Vobi, and yet, late this afternoon, she's agreeable to this. As I've spoken to some of the committee members and council, I would like to make a motion that the files that are presently in the HR department be relocated to the back office of the council, the clerk's office area, and arrangements be made to secure that office for future use by the Civil Service Board. This is a temporary measure. Until such time, they can find a permanent home. Also, prepare a drop box in the lobby for applications to be dropped in a locked lockbox that the secretary will have a key, or to pick up the applications for any future civil service tests, again, until such time we can find a permanent home.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait for you to get done.
Wait for you to get done.
The motion, the second, is to, three parts. Move the, move and store, I'm sorry, move, move to store the files for Civil Service Board into the council auxiliary office. Item B, secure that office with a control key, and C, install a secured drop box in the lobby for applicants to deposit their applications. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Geiger.
Counselor Adams, did I understand you correctly that Board President Vobi was in agreement with that move?
Yes.
Okay. Technically, the care, if you will, of the files of the Civil Service Board is the responsibility of the board, and council does not have the authority to order them to do anything. It's a moot point if they're in agreement to doing that, though, so I just wanna make sure that council's clear on its line of authority there.
So, as a matter of procedure, we make this motion, and basically, the board needs to, or the Acting Secretary needs to sign off on it, I guess, just to keep everything happy?
Um, yeah, but it sounds like she's already...
And she has.
So that's fine.
You know, it was discussion at that point.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and the board at its next meeting would either ratify it, or if they haven't done it yet, actually approve it, so...
Fair enough, that keeps it, it can still happen pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that the president of the board has the authority to effectuate the move herself, and then the board can ratify it later.
Okay. As another point of discussion, and to give everybody here just a little bit of history, unfortunately, Secretary Andy King passed away rather suddenly, and there were some moves to obtain the files, both hard copy and electronic, and get them into safekeeping within the confines of the city buildings. And because of the obvious surprise and untimeliness, decisions were made to secure them in a location in the HR department. As we've had time, there's, I think, the motion and how people vote on it will probably indicate that the board, the board acting secretary and the board have communicated that they would feel more comfortable with them in a location other than the HR offices, and that the applications have a secure box so that they're, and frankly, this protects HR department from receiving it, actually, it protects everybody. If they're dropped in a secure box that's tamper-resistant, the board acting secretary would be the only person to really have access to that and to retrieve them. It takes away any improprieties of, "I dropped it off with so-and-so." "No, you didn't, I did." It just removes all that. The procedure will be you put the application in the drop box. So, we have spoken with Howard Elstro, and we believe that upon final concurrence of Secretary Vobi, that we can effectuate this change yet this week. And frankly, the, it will also involve manually relocating the files. Will take some work on the part of IT to create the user access to the computer that's in that auxiliary office, and securing and installing a, I hate to say locked box, it's so, you know, it's been a while.
What it is.
A locked box, but a secure box for the depositing of applications. Okay? Again, it's very unfortunate, but it is, those were the decisions that were made at the time, and now that we've had time to digest some things, I intend to support the motion, so...
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I just want to follow up by main with the law director. You know, as again, I spoke with Deb Vobi this afternoon. It was her suggestion about the lockbox, the applications. She did not want them dropped off in HR.
Okay, very good.
And that was her suggestion. Also, she's gonna be getting with Gary Wors on the computer access, passcode, you know? But right now, she's still doing everything at home. But if they hold a meeting as they use our conference room, or will be temporarily, you know, that gives her immediate access if she needs to type something up, or look something up even, access to the city system. And I, and then also, the fax machine in that back room needs to be relocated, either hooked with the copier that we presently have in council office, or relocate the fax machine itself outside of the...
Outside of the auxiliary office, so the clerk has access to it.
I was just gonna say, what's a fax machine? You use that anymore?
It does use regular paper and not thermal paper, so...
Plus the paper supply that Sally keeps back there, and, you know, we need to talk with Sally yet, too, so... Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Glenn.
Yeah, I just gotta, Jesse, use for me.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Counselor Lowe.
Okay, thank you. I understand what was just said. I would like to see the city purchase a new secure computer for civil service themselves. I don't think, I understand the password and everything, but I don't think that we should even be on the computer. I think we should purchase them a new computer and fax machine that could be in that back room, and they would be, you got three members, and in the future, a secretary that'll be coming along, an attorney, maybe. Between those four, I think the four of them should have access, but I don't think we should be on the same computer operating, doing anything. So, within that motion, I really would like to see them get their own secure computer and fax machine, and keep Sally's separate, and period. I'll support it if we do that.
I think long range, that's what the ultimate goal is.
I think we need to do it.[1694.48]
It's just things that happen very, very quickly.
We find, we find millions to get other individuals, we find thousands to fix other situations and problems. I think that eight, nine hundred dollar computers, maybe twelve at the most, I think we could swing that, and I would like to see that happen.
Mr. President.
I'm in agreement with this.
I'll amend my motion to include that. And if it needs to, that portion eventually, we need to get the move to happen as soon as possible, but the finance committee, we can maybe call a meeting and do some reallocation of some funds. You know, okay? I agree with you.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Did you have the second?
Yeah, I have the second.
You had the second on the original?
I actually had it.
Sam did.
Yes. We still have another voice to go through. I've got some changes to.
I, I understand. Okay. Mr. Glenn.
Yeah, one thing I had to say, with being the chairman of human resource, and Ms. Miles and Ms. Adams, and I appreciate that, you know, I'm going to talk to Ms. Adams about it, because this is keeping us out of trouble, because you want to hear people talking as soon as they find out it was up at human resource. And I really don't want in the building at all, because, you know, we got all these jobs coming up in these locations right upstairs, but if you guys feel comfortable with the computer and all that, like you say, it's up to the board to make that decision. And we'll go with that, but I agree with Mr. Lo about, we need the computer, and agree with Ms. Adams, I'm glad she brought that up, because we don't want no one saying, well, they got it at the human resource, you can pick and choose who you want. But they needed that. So, glad we're making these stands right now, and any other city council got anything to say about it, so we can add all this in there and get it fixed. So, we get this fixed, because I know a lot of people say, ask me question, what are you going, what are you going to house, what are we going to take applications to now, you know, since Andy had passed away? So, we're saying that it'll be at the city building. They say, why is that the city building, you know? So, but I'm glad we taking, particular moment is getting taken care of now. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn.
I'll pass.
Okay. Counselor Miles, anything to add?
I'm down.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor, A, move to store the files in the council auxiliary office, B, secure the office, C, install a secure drop box in the lobby for applicants, and D, to include.
Purchase a new computer and fax.
A, what's the, what's the word? Secure computer, secure PC?
A new, new computer, I mean, is what I heard Mr. Lo ask for.
To include new PC, okay. You don't need to second anything else, Mr. McClellan, I don't think.
I think it's all done.
You already did, right? Motion on the floor, all those.
If you said it, I misheard, but I think Mr. Lo included a, a new fax machine.
A new what?
Fax machine.
Separate from Sally's.
That thing that nobody knows what it is, so.
Just in case things happen. No, no, I'm not disagreeing.
We can meet with the board and see if they, if they need that.
Yeah, let's see if they need it. They need it, we'll, we'll authorize it.
Because like, right now, the computer that's there, it's hooked to the printer. And, you know, to run a print, you just hit print and it goes to that copier.
Yeah, but they're here to receive the copy.
Well, okay. How about if we just authorized the new PC, okay? And other equipment as is determined.
They need it.
Okay? If that includes the fax machine, it includes the fax. If it includes, if we have to get a new computer in there, I don't know where we're going to put it, but at least.
It's gonna be a window.
Well, you know.
Not much room in there.
Are you in agreement with that? Okay, I mean, instead of trying to define how many pens and pencils they're gonna have, we can, just other, other equipment as may be determined to be necessary.
If I may, Mr. President, a permanent home's fine, found, we're gonna have to address furniture and things like that, you know, to equip the office.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I was gonna get.
We can get into more detail.
This is temporary.
Yeah, this is temporary.
And I guess, to get, I think the point of the motion is to get this, the data security.
Correct.
There will be a conversation in council of the whole, over the whole process of what direction we move going forward, and appointment of a secretary, okay? And all of the other associated issues surrounding civil service, office standing, okay? But I think Counselor Adams' intent, and Deborah Vobi's intent, first and foremost, was to get the files in a, in a secure, as secure as possible place that is not commingled with other administrative departments, okay? All right? So, there's the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
I'm done, thank you, Mr. President.
You're next.
Yep.
Counselor Glenn, you're next. I have one, two, three, four, five, six lines.
You better get another page, guy, I have to keep rolling here. Hey, Ms. Smith, does anybody get this on the city website? Let's talk.
Well, he thought it was on the internet.
Oh, no. I mean, Mayor, can we get this on the website?
We can link to the mailroom where they have all that posted.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, 'cause we really need it. Okay, I got a few things, I ain't gonna miss that one. But, uh, what I want to talk about, we had, I know we had some people visiting the old Sabalot, and I had an opportunity to talk to some of them about it, and a lot of people's got a lot of rumors around there, and it's not true yet. We are, we are working on it, and we'll be taking a road trip this weekend and, and seeing what they plan on doing. But I'm hoping, I know a lot of folks said they want gas station, and I know people heard of Circle K, but I'm sure it's not, it's not a Circle K, so, so please stop right now and keep your finger crossed, and we see if these folks gonna decide to come in the area. So, we hoping and praying they do. We will be starting our, our six-word newsletter back. This will be kicked off Memorial Day. We have our first letter ready to go. I'd like to thank all the good sponsors who sponsor this newsletter. We got, we're gonna have at least for the summer, we got enough money to run it for the whole summer, so we very happy about that. Also, we got scholarship money to help neighborhood associations out, and this money is to build the neighborhood, who will be paying the membership dues for fifteen, as long as you be eligible, fifteen members, because some of them are shorter than fifteen members, so we gonna make you eligible. So, we'll make sure that, just give us a call, send us a letter, and let us know that, that you guys want that. You know, you guys got, you got two new member, three new members, how much your membership costs, and we'll take care of it. Six Word comes first now, we gotta make sure the Six Word Neighborhood Association is taking care, and then we come with other neighborhoods on that. Martin Luther King cleanup went great. We had the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association, we had the Forest Street Church, and I was very happy with that. It put everybody together, and what I was so happy about, Mr. Lo, Jesse Dad, bought all the fish for everyone out there, and fried all the fish up, and baked beans, I mean, and I really appreciate that, appreciate that so, Mr. Lo, for doing that. And he just said, you guys come out, eat, come, we're gonna bring you over some pizza. He said, I got fish cooked. And it was good fish, and we appreciate the church allowing us to be there to eat, and I thank all the volunteers that came out and got some of the alleys cleaned out, and you guys did an excellent job, you know, I appreciate it so much. Also, we had the opening at the stadium, that was so great, and, you know, all the city councils were there, you know, and I appreciate everybody being there, Mr. Lo van, and that was great. And a good point about it, when a parent, two parents came up and say, you know, I said, which one of your kids out there playing? And he, he, she showed me their kid. He said, you know, I said, how's the grades? He said, you know, one for Mr. Lo drum line, and he got their grades back up. Now, I know Mr. Lo preach on that all the time, education, and that make you feel real good, you know? And I'm like, wow, he said, he was doing real bad, and we got him in that drum line, and he's, he doing excellent. So, thank you, Mr. Lo, for that, I appreciate it. You know, I hear good stuff like that, it's great. And then we had another, and I just love hearing good things about what councilman's doing. We had a, the guy had a problem, listen, chickens, and I had to touch it, she, but, and he said that he really, really appreciate what Ms. Adams did. He really appreciated. He, he stopped me at Walmart, said, man, she called me back, she took care, she got out there, and, and then, you know, when he was telling me about it, it was the people from Spencerville listening about. They say, wow, that is good, you know? And, and they, they knew you, Ms. Adams, so it's great, they knew your mom. So, and they said, oh, yeah, she do good workout, but that, you know, you hear that, good things like that, you know, it's really great.
Thank you.
You know? And then we had a young man was talking about how our new street department is, you know, our new cleaner, how good he doing and stuff, and he told me, tell Howard, thank you for that, you know, for ordering that, you know, or a machine like that, you know, and that's great. These are some of the good things you hear, you know? And when I, and I, when I, we was at, we was coming from church, and I know we go to church in Baccus, but we stopped at Walmart's, and she didn't get to tell me the officer name, but she was telling me, a young lady was telling me, it's Mr. Glenn, it's a, it's a German name, I think it's a German name, but she was saying how he helped them out. He gave them, she had five kids there, and she didn't have enough money to take them in the swimming pool out there. And he said, he ran all the way back to his car and got the money out and paid for it. And she told me that she wanted that major, I mean, Chief Martin know that he got some fine officers, and that's great there. So, I'm very happy to hear all the good stuff. And our, our neighborhood COP officer getting a lot of good feedback. He's at Bradford Center, they giving him some great feedback, you know, that, and I always say he'll be in Leland, you know, and Leland was one of our good, one of our great COP officer when we first started, that he knew everybody in the west end of town. So, that's why I'm looking at some of the good things like that. And start next month, we're gonna, we got a sponsor, again, we got a sponsor, it been sponsor day for Six Word, to give out our Six Word Person of the Month. So, we gonna be doing that every month, and you have opportunity to come to city council and get your award. But we'll continue doing these things and continue growing the Six Word, but no Circle K is coming to Sabalot, so please stop the rumor. I hope it do, but stop the rumor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn, Counselor Miles.
Okay, I'll try to reserve your lines over here. All right. Well, first, I want to say I'm sorry, I was not able to attend the opening of the stadium park. It was something that I had looked forward to going and attending, because I know the long history of behind it, being a part of the school system and all the different things that could have stopped that from, from coming to our city here. And so, I wish I could have been there, but I, you know, had a family event that is rare for my three children and all my grandkids to be home at the same time here, so that was a rare opportunity for me to enjoy them, but I, from hearing on the news and the newspaper, I sound like it was a, a great time here, so. The Westgate Neighborhood Association sponsored a citywide pride site at Superior Credit Union on Saturday, and a couple of days before the event, we found out that the site manager, Arley, the Neighborhood Association, was very sick and was not able to be there for it, and so I was called to say, hey, you know, we need someone to be there to manage the, the location. And so, we very quick, they got some volunteers together, and I pulled my husband in on this here, and I was, I want to say thank you to Bob Freeman here, he was one of the ones that, that came out and helped us in that site here. We also had individuals from the court come out, but they're individual, the young people that have to do community service. So, it ended up being a really good day. We was able to have enough volunteers to keep that site going on Saturday, otherwise we may have had to, to not have it, you know, because of, of, you know, the Westgate Neighborhood Association president not being able to be there. And so, I want to say thanks to Bob, you know, he was a big help, you know, he's been through this site before, so he's knowing, he knows what to do here, and I did the paperwork, and he did a lot of the hard work there, along with my husband and other volunteers. And I want to thank John Snyder for coming out and being a part of it, coming out and just, you know, helping out and just being there at the site here. But it ended up being a great morning, there, the rain held off, which we thought the rain was gonna happen here, but we had continuous residents coming in and using that site to dump stuff. I mean, it was nonstop here, and it, it's a really good service that we provide for the residents here, to be able to bring their, their trash, you know, garbage and stuff there to dump it here. So, it was a great day here, and the right refuge individuals, the two young men that were there helping us out, they were fantastic. They were, they were very good, they worked, had great conversations with them, you know, in, in the few low times that we had, and so, I really want to say to the right refuge personnel that they really did a super job, I really appreciate, you know, them being there and helping out, and it got kind of busy at times here, but they were there. Now, we didn't have any fish, but we had tons of doughnuts. We had doughnuts galore. Everybody was dropping off doughnuts here, and for me, that was a no-no, you know? But the young kids enjoyed the doughnuts here, so it was a great day, and I just appreciate Bob and John and everyone that came out and helped make that day a success here. Next, I want to say congratulations, again, we talked about Justin Wireman. Justin, Officer Justin was honored on Friday night at an event at the city club here, and it was really a great night, because many people in the community were honored, you know, and the young man that puts this on every year is a, is a young man, and he's young, he's probably, what, twenty-four, twenty-five here?
Twenty-five.
But he, he noticed that, you know, a lot of publicity goes to people that are negative in our community, you know, you know, but he said very little attention is given to those who are doing great things in our community. And so, last year, he had his first excellent award, and he had his second one on Friday night, and Officer Wireman was honored, and I tell you, they love that officer. I mean, every, you know, a lot of, lot of the individual, he's the, the COP officer at Bradford Center, and all of the individuals from the, you know, the board and the, all the different individuals came out to be there to support him on that night. His wife was there, and it was really a great night. He was truly honored for the work that he do at the Bradford Center, and also throughout the community and helping our young people here. He's really good, has a really good rapport with the young people, and everyone said that he goes above and beyond, and so, it was good to see that COP Officer Wireman honored that night here, and I tell you, to see the people smile and to give him accolades for what he's doing here, you know, it's, that's what our police officers deserve. I mean, they, they put theirself in line of duty all the time, you know, danger, and it was good to see him being honored Friday night, and so, I think, you know, congratulations to Officer Wireman. Also, I want to thank Kurt Niemeyer. I'm, I'm a regular patron at the YMCA, and, and there's, and for years, there've been a discussion about, there's a walkway that, that, that individuals, when they leave the Y, they walk from the Y over to the parking lot, and there's been a lot of near misses, you know, because if you know on Lisber Street, as it gets close to, to Elm Street, that it kind of narrows, it goes from two lanes to one lane, and a lot, a lot, many times, because there's cars parked on, on one side, that when patrons get ready to cross the street to go over to the parking lot, that, you know, unless they're looking, that mean, they could very easily, you know, get hit by a car. So, I talked to Kurt, you know, about having a crosswalk, you know, lines across the road here, but he said, no, that would not work, because there is a actual light, you know, about fifty feet up here. So, we kind of talked about different, what can we do to protect our, the people that are leaving, especially elderly, we have a lot of elderly people that are leaving the Y, going across the street to their parking lot. And so, he finally decided that, you know, a good thing that we can put in, what he, what he would agree to, would be a, a sign that would be put probably about, you know, fifty feet before you get to the, to the crosswalk that says, you know, be aware of pedestrian, pedestrian crossing. So, there's a sign there, so that now that motors that are coming close to that, to that walkway will, you know, somewhat hopefully be cautious as they, and slow down a little bit, you know, for the patrons. So, the sign was put up, it looks real nice, and I, and I thank the YMCA officials who have been trying to get something done for years and years, was, was really happy to see something finally being put there for the people that are leaving there, going across the street to get to the parking lot here. So, thanks Kurt, Kurt for working with me. He disagreed with some of the things that were going on here, but we finally came to an agreement, and the sign was put up, and I really appreciate his work here, so. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Miles, Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things, like Counselor Adams, I want to remind people to be safe on Memorial Day weekend. Also, the, the event out at Stadium Park was a really enjoyable event. I lo, I love listening to the stories about the events that went on in the stadium from like the Judge Chaney and, and Matt Huffman, and I have a few of my own stories, but I'll leave those, I'll leave those alone, I won't, won't talk about them, but.
You start it.
Yeah, but, yeah, I enjoyed coaching in that stadium for years, but one, one particular thing happened that I got to blame on Mr. Elstro. He got my grandkids excited when they were gonna turn on the, the pad, you know, and they thought they was gonna get wet, and grandpa wasn't a very.
Nothing to do with that.
No, I wouldn't have nothing to do with that. They, they weren't too happy with me, but then I got my backup, actually, my shield, my wife came along and, but yeah, that, that was, I would say, thanks, Howard, but no thanks, I didn't appreciate it, but anyways, and then I want to make mention the high-octane band, Counselor Lo. Oh, man, I enjoyed watching those kids, I mean, them guys, I mean, I was about to dance, but like I've said before, my wife won't let me dance in public. It's not a pretty sight, but man, it was great, I appreciated it, and, and, you know, I just wanted to make mention of that. And the last thing, I want to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you.
Be good to each other, but you wouldn't let your grandkids get wet.
I was being good to me.
And your car.
And my car.
Counselor McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Echoing on the dedication, it was, if you get in there and a chance just to sit down by that splash pad and you look around, it's, it's amazing what that land has turned into. You know, the bands from Plymouth Senior and LCC were down over the hill, but you could hear them very, very well. down by that splash pad and you look around, it's, it's amazing what that land has turned into.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the vans from Lima Senior and L C C were down over the hill, but you could hear them very, very well. So, it's gonna be, uh, a, a great place to gather, and I think that's what a park is for, is to gather and to enjoy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know that I ever, ever get my feet wet in that splash pad, but, uh, it certainly was nice to see that thing come on. And it, what, what a beautiful venue. It really is. Coming into our city and, and seeing that is a, a major accomplishment, so, uh, very, very good. Uh, but I also wanna talk a little bit about something that Ms. Adams brought up, and that's our Civil Service Board. As Council of the Whole, I think we need to, and I'm gonna make a motion that we sit down and discuss a replacement for Andy King. So, I wanna make a motion that we place into Council of the Whole so that we can, uh, discuss the replacement of Andy King or an attorney to replace him.
Right.
He's got it right. It takes him a while.
Motion, and the second is to move, refer the subject of replacing the Civil Service Board Secretary to Council of the Whole.
Correct. And the last thing I'd like to talk about...
Hold on, we gotta vote on that motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The last thing is, again, Memorial Day that's coming up, um, it's a nice three-day holiday, please be safe. It's usually the first weekend where everybody gets out, works their yards, visit grave sites, memorialize the people that have passed away for us, you know, it's, uh, they gave their lives, and it's gonna be an awesome parade on Monday. They've arranged a flyover, which is something I don't remember ever having in Lima, so keep an eye out for that. Uh, that's awesome, and if you get a chance to walk in the parade, walk, come out and look, enjoy it. Have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clay. Counselor Low.
I got a lot.
Do you wanna go once? Do you wanna go once?
You write it down.
I got a lot.
One page, two pages.
I'll pick it back up and say it real quick before I forget. It is Memorial Day, and I don't like really talking about those that are, that have passed, but if you know veterans that are still amongst us, do something nice for them, do something nice for them, uh, without them asking or saying anything, just, just say, "Here you go," and, and do it out of love. Uh, we do appreciate that. Uh, here's my list. Uh, I got lots of calls on the television, uh, Channel Two, our live feed. I did receive an email, they are working on the problem. Uh, there's a lot of homes in Lima that say they are not seeing us live, but they are seeing the reruns of Council. And they, I guess it's a glitch, and they're gonna handle it, um, so just please be patient. Those that have called me and came and seen me on that matter, tire dumping.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, man. There you go, stop. All right.
Okay. Tire dumping, back in full force again.
Yep.
In the alley in back of me alone, there's thirteen tires, uh, just at a half a block radius, actually, and, uh, that is the seven-hundred block and six-hundred block, they kinda join together, uh, between Union and Main, and between McKibben and Grant. So, there's tires back there again. Is there any way we can get those picked up? Please, let's get them picked up. Um, the truck is a tan S-ten vehicle, female driver, and the male does the dumping. Okay? I just couldn't get the, get the face quick enough. They, they took off. I tried my best, believe that. Uh, I wanna say thank you for the nice comments, uh, with high-octane. I pushed the kids, but I, I, I try to push them to excellence, and some of them couldn't stand me ten minutes before the performance, but afterwards, I, it was, it was nice for them to come up and say, "Hey, I know why you did that, and I, and I, and we understand now," and, and, um, they had a, they had an extra time. Uh, I introduced them to the individual that taught me, which was James Lehman, and they were blown away that he was still living. I, I think they think I'm eighty years old, but, but they, they met him, and so, uh, he has told me in the past he wants to work with him. High-octane is a great deal, we do hold the kids accountable for their grades, and we go into the schools and make sure that they are not average, uh, same things that you were saying in your film tonight, we're trying to plant seeds of positivity, let them know you are not average, you don't settle for Cs and Ds and Fs, uh, and, and we push them and make sure that they do well. Um, but while I'm on that, I have several people daily that have come to me and asked me, "Mr. Low, you need to really get back out here and get Drug Spring Def going again." 'Cause it got people to come together, fellowship talk, uh, families were able to communicate with one another, and they hashed out problems, and they, they sought help, and we had a network of individuals that were able to help. But one of the things that we share with Drug Spring Def is mentally, physically, and spiritually, and, and it is, and, and going out and speaking to, like in your film, you said to speak to the kids, if, if the parents need to speak to the kids, but what has happened, and let's just be very, very real, is that we've had kids who have had kids who have had kids, and the individuals that we are asking to speak to the kids are the ones that are using. And we talked to them for ten minutes, and then they go back home in twenty-three hours and fifty minutes of the opposite. So, it, it's, it's gonna take a village, it's gonna take all of us speaking, but to me, until we get the proper detox centers, the proper treatment, uh, follow-up support, and, and, and make God number one in this, we're gonna see the same cycle. We're gonna see the same cycle. If we can spend thousands, we can have roots all day long, but we need proper detox facilities. We need proper treatment and follow-up supports. There's some that's out there, I don't know where we're failing, but it has to be bigger than us sitting at table meeting. We got to do hands-on. We have to do hands-on. As a city, we need to provide alternatives. We don't even have a boy and girls club here in this city. It's ridiculous. We, we need to find things for these kids to do. I don't mind, it's devil's playground. Everybody's not gonna hit a ball, shoot a ball, run track, or play drums, so we had to give them different alternatives, and until we provide that, we're gonna see the same ball rolling. Fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago, it was crack, now it's heroin. And I didn't see nobody scrambling around for crack like they are for this heroin, but it's affecting everybody's family now. It's affecting everybody's family, rich, poor, black, white, purple, didn't matter. Now that just heroin is touching everybody, now it's an epidemic, you know? And no credit to me, but I was screaming this, like, "Lima got a problem, 'cause people was coming to me saying, 'Hey, my baby, my child, my, I just had a, I just had a very good close friend of mine just lost her son this weekend.'" It's not even being reported. The news is not reporting these O Ds. I don't, I don't understand that. The alley between Holler and Grand Street, and between Main and Elizabeth, really needs dug out. We, we, we keep going in year after year, and we keep dropping stone, but it's building up, where it's, it's so high now, it's flooding out the neighbors' yards, and the potholes in it are anywhere from five to nine, ten inches deep, and it, it is heck, trying to go through that alley, okay? So, if we could just, I would really like to see that alley grind down, for real, please. It, it is, it is, it's beyond, beyond. Uh, and that's actually in back of the Orioles, uh, on Main Street, it's really bad back there. Uh, noise orders.
Holler and Grand and...
Between Holler and Grand and Main and Elizabeth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, I've had a couple neighbors, we got some large and loud bars up on the north end of town. If you do not call and report the noise, the officers are not just gonna pull over and tell them to turn the music down. They can't. They cannot do that unless they have a call saying that is a, it is a nuisance. Trust me, I know. Okay? I've almost become numb to it, almost, but I'm getting a lot of calls on two bars on the north end of town in that area, and one is doing karaoke, and, uh, they're leaving the door. When I seen this report and the calls, I don't necessarily agree at all with the, with the amount of calls that's on this paper, because I see the officers every weekend, but I, I don't know why it's only under one, uh, six P. I don't understand fight and progress. I, I've seen more calls than that, and I've noted more calls than that, but it's only getting put under one thing. I don't understand that. Uh, but anyway, uh, they cannot just drive down the street if they hear music bumping or booming or loud, they can't just stop and say, "Turn it down." Okay? I've had that conversation with the chief, it has to be reported, so if you want it to go away, you're gonna have to report it. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I just have one item of business tonight, uh, and that is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor Crare. Second. Motion, the second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Um, I will be establishing a date for a Council of the Whole meeting for, uh, I guess, uh, the purposes of the Civil Service Board and the other item that was referred tonight. Okay? So, we will be, uh, probably be shooting tentatively for June 12th.
June 12th.
Well, it's gonna be a Monday night.
I'll be on vacation.
Your own vacation.
Just one of the several, one of the...
Uh, June 26th?
Sure. I'll be on vacation.
Are you serious?
No, I'm just joking, I'm just joking. I'm trying to look at Sam, but Sam, no, 26 is good for us.
All right. Let's, um, pencil that in for June 26th, okay?
What time you got?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, great, 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 great.
Mr. President?
Counselor Allen.
I move that council adjourn until...
You forgot to pay. Oh, Rebecca, we did?
Yeah.
I didn't hear it, okay, all right.
You voted on it.
I did. Okay.
Mr. President?
Counselor Adams.
I move that council adjourn until June 5th, 7:00 P. M. in these chambers.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adjourn until June 5th at 7:00 P. M. in these chambers. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.